Welcome everyone. Steve approval of the budget is from April 24th and April 29th, Special Weeden.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any objections, motion carries.
Add an item to the agenda. Um, we need to, for G5, we need to discuss June 12th. What have I mean to the point size of the middle school promotion?
Second. So will we put it to G5? Yeah, we just put it to, will we put it on the agenda or?
Yeah, I mean, you're looking for a person to talk about it.
Yes, okay, yeah. So can I get a second? Adam, sorry, Colin, David, any opposed, any objections, motion carries. Oh, yes, we, so we usually start, um, a little video, real positive stuff going on in our school. Kyle, wastewater engineer.
Linda, electrical engineer.
Eunice, aerospace engineer.
Brianna, environmental engineer.
Rachel, wastewater engineer. We're really excited today to have all our volunteers here for our STEM theme day, which is science, technology, engineering, and math. At this age, students start to begin to think about what they want to do for the future and a lot of times, girls start to move away from those fields. So we thought that this was a great way to provide opportunities for our students to become more familiar with these fields. We have an amazing array of women here that are setting such a professional example for our growth in these fields.
Tahira, environmental engineer.
Maybe future environmental.
Rachel, chemical engineer.
Audrey, future chemical engineer.
She has cancer and wants to get out of bad tissue. So we can keep the healthy tissue and make sure that the patient.
There's plenty of need for the girls to have encouragement to stick with their interests. A lot of girls are interested in science and STEM fields through middle school and even into high school, but the numbers that pursue it into careers down the road are pretty slim. And so there's a lot of research that says if we can give them the encouragement, hook them up with mentors, and let themselves see other women that are doing the things that they want to do, then the chances of them following through and getting into those fields are better. The girls are gonna have fun, they're gonna be in these workshops doing cool hands-on things, building rockets and all kinds of other fun stuff, but the chance to talk to the professionals and hear their stories and understand why they pursued and kept going into the fields and what they enjoy about it, that's more important than anything else.
And then we'll do some other stuff that you've got and that's where your meeting which is.
STEM Fens is all about promoting STEM for young girls. Research actually shows that as middle school to high school when girls lose interest in STEM, and so it's not that we're excluding guys because we definitely want them to be interested in STEM as well, we just want the girls to see the representation that's not regularly there on TV or in magazines.
Limba, electrical engineer.
Evelyn, future electrical engineer.
Brianna, biomedical engineer.
Riley, future biomedical engineer.
Messy.
We're messy anyway, so a lot of things.
Right. Looks good. All right.
Um, so, agenda letter C, public participation. If anybody has any comments, questions, or concerns for the board, please come up to the floor with your name and address.
Let's pass that 54 to Zai Lan. First of all, congratulations on the budget. And we feel really excited and congratulations on First Grove. I know there was tremendous effort put for this group in educating the public and educating the grassroots effort, and I think it's just helpful to continue to do that for future budget refinements and future things that are facing, helping us to progress education. That was awesome. I would encourage us to continue that into high school, and it really brings up the point that it's gonna make, I have an intern from Tallinn High School working for me. She told me today something kind of stunning, that she's only one of three kids in Tallinn High School that are interning, several others are kind of doing work, their own work study or something else, but this is exactly what we need, is for our students, whether male or female, working with the community or people outside of the community. It would really bridge that gap that we see from business owners in Tallinn that push against some of the taxes and things. It would really bridge the gap into seeing what the students of our schools can do for the community and what the community can do for our schools. So, um, I think that's it. Thank you, appreciate it.
Anything else? All right, Michelle is kind of late, I don't think there's any correspondence from her, so we can move right along to points of information. Ty also wanted to just say I think it's a huge victory for our town yesterday, we were in First Grove and the entire town. And I want to thank all the volunteers and everybody that came out to move along and help get past.
I don't want to run the parade, I just, I mean, I'm thrilled the budget passed, that First Grove passed, don't want to lose sight that the Board of Education budget reduced to about eight hundred fifty thousand dollars, which is highly, highly unusual, like, that just doesn't happen, and so it's, it's a challenging place to be, and I know, we all know that around the table, but I think it's important we mention that. Yes, it's great that the budget passed, committee looking up to me and said, wow, it passed the first time, that's great, and so it's hard to explain, well, yes, it's great that it passed, yet the Board of Ed, you know, the, the school funding isn't what it could be, and there are reductions that will have to be dealt with, and so I just want to make sure that we continue to make sure folks are aware of that.
Yep, that's a very good point, um, Callie, I'm glad, I thought if you had a better idea of what ECS, ECS fund will get back, it could be more than what we were expecting, so that's a point of the conversation we'll have to have with the council.
I guess my one comment to that is the, the appropriations committee, I think it was, came back and said they're gonna keep the, the ten-year reduction, so the governor's three-year reduction, and the appropriation committee's ten-year reduction, is, both of those are still on the board, around the table, and I don't know which way it's gonna go, but, I, yeah, it's not gonna, it's not necessarily gonna be a three-time, three-year full reduction, so.
So we did hear from Senator Champagne last week, that they're getting all of them from ECS.
As well as pension.
And pensions. So we have, just watch, see what happens. Um, anyone else before we move on? Just to answer it. All right, you're up.
You'll have to excuse me, I'm, I'm, the pollen count is really, it's really taking a toll on me today. I've got quite a lot, so you better buckle up.
We were timid.
We, um, the band kids at the high school just had our adjudication and our large field trip to Chicago, um, the week after April break, so that's why I wasn't at that past meeting. Um, it was a, an absolute blast. Mrs. Kerwin, our band director, said it was the best group of kids she's like ever traveled with, so that means a lot, and it definitely, it definitely keeps band and music trips and adjudications in her mind for future years, which is awesome. Uh, the same week, DECA Nationals happened, and those were in Orlando. I don't know how many of you have heard, but Tallinn did very well in that, like, astoundingly well. Uh, I don't know the specifics on every student that got an award, but we had some students getting two awards, three awards. It was outstanding. Uh, they truly are fantastic students and fantastic representation from Tallinn. Um, SAT scores were released to juniors who took them, I think it was back April 9th, they got released on May 2nd, so this past Thursday. Uh, NHS, National Honor Society inductions were yesterday, 21 juniors and seniors were inducted. Uh, class officer speeches at the high school were also yesterday, so you have young representatives of the Tallinn community giving their speeches. Uh, the DECA Olympics to raise money for the Muscular Dystrophy Association, that is coming up, they're doing their, um, marketing for that right now, and I believe, I want to say it's the second-to-last week in May that they're doing it. Um, what else? Student Council's Mental Health Week is also coming up, that's gonna be the four-day week, we have the 28th through the 31st. Um, the National Honor Society snack drive for Tallinn Human Services is, uh, it's happening, I think it's starting that same week but ending a bit later. It's, uh, a snack drive for all of the kids who we provide as a district, lunches and meals for kids who may otherwise not be able to have them, so we're giving food to kids who need it, and it's pretty awesome. Uh, Germany and Costa Rica trips for the spring of next year have been, started to be marketing around our school. Uh, I, the Spanish and world language part of our school is running the Costa Rica trip, obviously, and, um, Mr. Chahaski and Mr. Dornfried are handling the Germany trip. It's going to be from Berlin to Munich, and I want to say it's 12 days? Uh, it's, it's pretty long, and, and Mr. Dornfried, I know, speaks almost fluent German, and he's, they're, they're amazing, but, um, I know we've been trying to get, uh, younger teachers involved in field trips and getting students more active, and they are doing just that. We, as a district, have some teachers that really care about our students, so. I'm done now.
Hey, I was just gonna.
You're out of role.
About the energy.
Um, I, I was just gonna ask you, Fisher, the Student Council Mental Health Week, are there things you could share that are going on that week in particular?
We're still ironing out, uh, a lot of details. I know we're doing raffle baskets to, I forget which charity we decided on, but I, it's either the, uh, National Institute of Mental Health, or I want to say the American Association for Depression and Anxiety. One, one of those charities that we may not have even decided, I, I was in Chicago, so I missed yet another Student Council meeting, but, um, I will definitely keep you updated on that as more details arrive.
That'd be great, thanks, that sounds great. Do you have any questions? Thank you for everything. All right.
All right, so we're at G1, uh, this is a pleasure to be able to do tonight. We do have some students with us, including our own well-known Fisher Thompson, who will be honored this evening, and I still, I see Will Blascher, who's right in the back, and he's going to be honored by Ms. Grandy, as well as some words that I'm gonna say. So tonight, we are honoring the cave recipients of Connecticut Association of Boards of Education, recipients of these recognition awards, the 2019 recognition awards. They receive these awards for being all-around awesome, and that's the perfect time to have a phone call from my sister. But, um, we, uh, so, I'll just interrupt. Uh, so tonight, I'm going to read some narrative that was put out there to the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education that allowed them to be selected, and these individuals were selected as, from all of the school, all of the kids in the school district at their various schools, so it's, it's, it's a selective process, and they won, proud of all the other students in the school. So first, I'd like to honor Zoe Livingston, she's not here today, but we're gonna be giving her an award later, but I did want to read the narrative for her so that people could get a sense of how great Zoe is. Zoe embodies Tallinn High School's core values, she brings people together through her love of music, theater, and art. Within the classroom and as a class officer, Zoe is a leader. She respects all students' contributions to the conversation, and she works hard to bring together everybody's ideas as a community. Zoe is constantly looking to improve as a student, she readily accepts feedback from both peers and educators, and quickly applies the feedback to her learning. She's always ready for a challenge, and she doesn't just complete a given assignment, she looks for ways to go above and beyond the requirements to maximize her learning. Zoe is focused on her future, and it is right indeed, so congratulations, Zoe.
And Zoe's from the middle school.
She and Zoe and Will, who's up next, are from the middle school, so I would like to recognize Will Blascher. Will, and then I'm gonna have Ms. Grandy say a few nice things too, and we have these special recognition certificates as well, that I'll have you provide. All right, and I think there, he's also gonna be honored at the end of year awards, right?
Yes, well, Zoe and Will.
So, Will is hardworking and extremely conscientious. His high level of thinking is balanced nicely with a sense of humor and friendliness. He is very informed on current events, what is happening in the world, and his varied interests in different subjects come across in his daily discussions. Will is intrinsically motivated to do his best in all areas of life, which can be seen during group work, class discussions, and small group conversations. When pairing Will with peers, he works to always bring out the best in them, no matter what student you match him up with. These qualities exemplify a well-rounded student who's ready to meet the challenges that education can bring. Congratulations. And Will, I don't know, if Ms. Grandy, would you like to come and say a few things about our awesome Will?
He has a picture.
Unless you want to do like an Elvis thing.
Awesome, thank you. Good job. Say a couple of things.
Yes, go ahead.
So, just a couple of things about Will, I'm gonna make you stand up here. Will is kind, he's conscientious, he's a great student, he's great to his peers, he's wonderful to have as a student, and all the things that were written about him were from his teachers, and we are very proud to honor him and Zoe as well this evening, so thank you for having this award and congratulations.
So our next award recipient tonight is our own Fisher Thompson, our beloved student representative to the board, speaks his mind and just keeps us all in line. So I'll give you this written recommendation from Fisher to the cave award, and then of course, as you know, it's accepted. This letter serves as a commendation to our Student Board of Ed representative, Fisher Thompson. He is to be, he is to be commended for his thoughtful and meaningful contributions to the mission of the Board of Education under 10-222 to best serve the interests of the school district. He's a talented and thoughtful student with wisdom beyond his years. A student able to leverage his significant school accomplishments and experience to provide deep and meaningful perspectives to the Board of Education. Mr. Thompson is also a guardian of the interests of students in their personal lives, and is known to be a positive influence in the social context of the high school. Mr. Thompson has gone out of his way to understand the budget process and how it impacts students. He takes time to absorb information and shares his perspective on budget with board members and the community alike. Board members have come to respect him as a board member in his own right, student or otherwise. Participating in both budget workshops, discussions, and official meetings, he has offered valuable insights on class sizes, co-curricular programs like music, and regular updates to the Board of Education on the lives of students. He has given the board perspective on student health, safety, drugs, and security, greatly informing letters the Board of Education wrote to the legislature, both on legalization of marijuana in the governor's budget. Mr. Thompson is a gifted musician in both the band and jazz band, a student council leader, a member of our AV tech staff, an overall gifted young man. He offers help to his peers and works within the school to improve culture and climate. An example would be his leadership in bringing a mental health program to fruition at the high school for students and the school community. Fisher Thompson is unequivocally recommended for this award and received it. Congratulations.
Okay?
All right, you have to hold your.
No, mom.
No, a little battery. Go ahead, mom, you got yours? Sorry. Mom's more. Okay, wait, I didn't get mine. I was letting mom do the. I got the slide.
Yeah.
Sorry.
It's good, it's okay.
You know I get to walk around the room.
So that is going to constitute my favorite part of the evening.
That's just very exciting, I'm really proud as a parent and a board member of students in our school, great role models. Good job.
Zoe, if you're watching, I'd really miss you and good job. I'm sure she's watching the community.
Yeah, right.
Right now, I'm sure that's what she's doing. She's there for her posterity when she's ready.
And please don't feel like you have to stay, unless it takes.
We all try.
Fisher's locker desk, Val doesn't have to stay.
It's a pollen count again.
You're welcome to stay, Will, but don't feel like you have to, our meetings can get a little. For the understanding, yep. All right.
Okay, so G2, second item on the Board of Education reports, tonight is the monthly financial report. As you know, business director sets up these reports for the board on a monthly basis. The attached 2019 financial report shows an available balance of $288,106.73% of the available budget. Budget balance will continue to be reduced as we head towards the end of the year. Apparently, the timing of the budget, as you know, the expense patterns are cyclical, and we are right on track for coming in at the end of the year with what we typically had for balances in the typical years we've had in the past. So I would say right now, if I had to make an educated guess, we're coming somewhere along the lines of the $60,000 zone, but something in that and nowhere near what was happening in the last really long years. Um, right now, as of the end of this month, you're at $288,106, and we have Agenda I of G4, which talks a little bit about reconciliation. That figure doesn't have excess cost in it, in May, in May, the excess cost payment will come in the second one, so it'll go up again from where it is right now, but, um, there's many things that we'll be talking about that we need to use that for, so, uh, we'll be kind of getting into that both at G4, but then I'll be giving you an updated reconciliation report at the next board meeting, which will have much greater detail because you'll have even more information about where we are. So, long and short of it is, we're coming in where we pretty much anticipated coming in, there are some things that were underspent, and then obviously there's some things that were overspent, we're able to shift the resources so that we can cover all of the education that needs to come. So that, this comprises the report for this month. And questions, if you have any questions, uh, Mr. McLaughlin is in the audience as well, then we can, okay? Or we get the answers for instance.
I wanted to ask about a number of accounts that had quite a big change versus their budgeted number. Professional education services line 320, tech services line 350, instrument, or instructional supplies and materials line 610, textbooks 640, and equipment instruction due 730, and possibly general supply 600. Looks like those had some big spending in the last two months, could you just explain what those were, if that was pre-buying for next year or catching up, because maybe, or whatever the reason is.
Yeah, of course, and some of these I'll fit in more detail next time, but I think you were saying professional ed services was one, right?
Yeah.
So, professional ed services, um, right now, we are in that stage of the year where we're trying to balance what we're gonna be facing next year, and as you know, we have the 28.1% budget. So we're making adjustments to make sure we can cover the bases that we need to cover, and this is a good example of, of one of those areas where we'd be covering, the base that we need to. So, we needed to expend some resources on a direct literacy program, the Literacy How program for special education needs to be expanded and extended, we needed to do that, it's one of our dyslexia avoidance programs, um, and we, we, you know, given the impacts that we were gonna face, we needed to make the investment so that we could continue our, our program, and if we weren't able to make the investment, our program would greatly, greatly be compromised. So, you know, in order to avoid the outplacements for many different things, that Literacy How program is absolutely crucial for the district. We saw a trend in a direction of a lot of kids needing it because of our testing and our metrics, and that, that at least will inspire our program. Was able to identify a large need, so we needed to cover what we were seeing in the student populations, and we're covering it with the Literacy How program, which required a purchase in that area. That's, um, that's what made up that, at least at this point, and there'll be some more of these as we go through and have to adjust to some of the other pieces. So for tech services, again, technical services, as you're aware, things pop up that we need to take care of. Some of these things that popped up, for, for now, we're doing the mechanical services, usually that relates to our geothermal units, although I'm not sure if that's the exact thing on that one, but that's usually what I've seen doing in mechanical info recently. Eagle rivet roofing, integrated technology services, eco-window film, I think the eco-window film was part of putting in, um, certain protective films in the windows, paving, TIS, damming, electrical, central acoustics, jade oil construction, overland flooring, SCIPs, wastewater service, there's some issues we had there, and some technology licensing fees that needed to be renewed, and we might lose the opportunity to do that, sometimes if you can renew for three years, you get a lower rate, and some classroom subscriptions, but again, we wouldn't have the opportunity to do, so we were doing that. So again, when you have the kind of budget situation we have, being able to make adjustments towards the things you might not have in the future is part of what, you know, we need to do at the end of the year. So that would be technical services. Um, let's see. Trying to take a quick look at some of these other ones. One of the other ones was instructional equipment that you had asked about, right?
Yeah, instructional supplies, materials, 610.
So instructional equipment and supplies, um, we needed to make an investment in some of the classroom furniture that was falling apart, specifically in science classrooms, it can be unsafe. Um, some of the, we did some changing in the special ed offices and other offices, so we needed to, for instance, we took some special ed services out of the central office and put it into a different office area in the high school, so there was some copy equipment and computers that needed to be invested. Tech schools, tech, some tech ed tools that were needed, and a tech ed room replacing some things that were not doing well. Music furniture that was not doing well, that kids were falling out of, special ed, uh, special education equipment, um, some additional computers were also purchased because some of the computers were on their way out and running slowly. Whenever we do that, we usually end up having a handover to the town for some other ones, so you'll see probably something getting surplus to be, um, beginning of next year or later in this year at one of the board meetings. Uh, so where we can, when we have an opportunity, we'll replace the equipment that's, that's old, doesn't take the software anymore. And an example of, um, this happening is the Flash software, the Math and Focus program, this is in specific, this, but it does, it's like, it's an example of it, it uses Flash, and, uh, now Flash, I guess, won't, isn't gonna be supported by the software, so we needed to upgrade the machines in order to be able to run the new stuff that, that, uh, the Math and Focus or that this math software will run with. So we needed to make the investment now, or all of the, um, media content for the program would not be.
textbooks six forty and equipment instruction new seven thirty, and possibly general supply six hundred. Looks like those had some big spending in the last two months. Could you just explain what those were, if that was prebuying for next year or catching up? Because maybe, or whatever the reason is.
Yeah, of course. Um, and some of these I'll hit in more detail next time, but I think you were saying, uh, professional ed services was one, right?
Yeah.
So professional ed services, um, right now, you know, we are in that stage of the year where we're trying to balance, uh, what we're going to be facing next year. And as you know, we have the point eight one percent budget. So we're making adjustments to make sure we can cover the bases, uh, that we need to cover. And this is a good example of, of one of those areas where we'd be covering a base that we need to. So we needed to expend some resources on, um, a direct literacy program. The literacy how program for special education needs to be expanded and extended. We needed to do that. It's one of our dyslexia avoidance programs. Um, and we, we not, you know, given the impacts that we're going to face, we needed to make the investment so that we could continue our, our program. And, uh, if we weren't able to make the investment, our program would greatly, greatly be compromised. So, you know, in order to avoid the outplacements for many different things, that literacy how program is absolutely crucial for the district. We saw a trend in a direction of a lot of kids needing it because of our, uh, testing and our metrics. Uh, not, not the least of which is inspire program. Was able to identify a large need, so we needed to cover what we were seeing in student populations. So we're covering it with the literacy how program, which required purchasing in that area. That's, um, that's what made up that. At least at this point. And there'll be some more of these as we go through and have to adjust to some of the other, um, pieces. So for tech services, again, technical services, as you're aware, things pop up that we need to take care of. Some of these things that popped up, uh, for now, we're doing the mechanical services. Usually that relates to our geothermal units, although I'm not sure if that's the exact thing on that one, but that's usually what I've seen doing in the camp coming in for recently. Eagle rivet roofing, uh, integrated technology services, eco window film. I think the eco window film was part of putting in, um, certain protective films in the windows. Paving T I S, damming electrical, central acoustics, jade oil construction, overland flooring, skip's wastewater service of, sir, uh, some issues we had there. Uh, and some technology licensing fees that, uh, needed to be renewed. And we might lose the opportunity to do that. Sometimes if you can renew for three years, you get a lower rate. And some classroom subscriptions, but again, we wouldn't have the opportunity to do, so we were doing that. And so again, when you have the kind of budget situation we have, being able to make adjustments towards the things you might not have in the future is part of what, you know, we need to do at the end of the year. So that would be technical services. Um, let's see. Trying to take a quick look at some of these other ones. One of the other ones was instructional equipment that you had asked about, right?
Yeah, instructional supplies, materials, six ten.
So instructional equipment and supplies, um, we needed to make an investment in some of the classroom furniture that was falling apart. Specifically in science classrooms, it can be unsafe. Um, some of the, we did some changing in the special ed offices and other offices. So we needed to, for instance, we took some special ed services out of the central office and put it into a different office area in the high schools. So there was some copy equipment and computers that needed to be invested. Um, tech schools, tech, some tech ed tools that were needed and a tech ed room replacing some things that were not doing well. Music furniture that was not doing well, kids were falling out of. Special ed, uh, special education equipment, um, some additional computers were also purchased because some of the computers were, you know, on their way out and running slowly. Whenever we do that, we usually end up having a, a handover to the town for some other ones. So you'll see probably something getting surplus to be, um, beginning of next year or later in this year at one of the board meetings. Uh, so where we can, when we have an opportunity, we'll replace the equipment that's, that's old, doesn't take the software anymore. And an example of, um, this happening is, uh, the flash software. The math and focus program, this is a specific to this, but it does, it's like, it's an example of it. It uses flash and, uh, now flash, I guess, won't, isn't going to be supported by the software. So we needed to upgrade the machines in order to be able to run the new stuff that, that, uh, the math and focus or that this math software will run with. So we needed to make the investment now or all of the, um, media content for the program would not be usable. So that, that's kind of one of those things that you have to adjust to. If you can't make the investment to upgrade what they're using, then an entire program no longer has its media content. One of the advantages of the program was its media content. So when you have a reduction like we did this year, you have to make adjustments so that you can cover some of the bases that otherwise, you know, the entire media content of the whole math and focus program would be lost. We, we don't want that to happen. So, uh, that would be technical service. I'm sorry, that's the instructional supplies. I think one of the other ones you had asked about.
Six, six forty textbooks.
Was, uh, okay, six forty textbooks. Then again, I'll keep giving you sort of updated reports on this as we go along. Textbooks. Okay, so this one is always one of the ones that we have to make adjustments to when a new curriculum has been assessed. And in this case, we needed new, um, math text for centage learning. So that constitutes about twenty six of that. Business ed needed some new textbooks. Social studies hasn't had textbooks in a long time in some places, now about fifteen hundred. And then in the reading programs, you have to have classroom readers. So kids get ranked on a certain level, twenty six different levels of reading. And in each level of reading, you have to have readers that equate to that level. And if you don't have readers that equate to that level, then the kids lose the impact of the program. So a good chunk, about seventy two was spent on getting readers for the programs. And we couldn't count on the next few years or even next year, having the ability to have all of, uh, the readers that we needed. So we made an investment in readers now, knowing that that wouldn't be as much of an opportunity in the future. Um, because we have to make adjustments for the budget. And I think instructional, did I cover that one already?
The other, the other two were seven thirty equipment instruction new and six hundred general supplies.
So I think, uh, okay, okay, instructional supplies, general supplies, materials. So, um, this one is one of the ones that probably will be good to report on next time. Most of this is due to timing, uh, because they're starting to look at what they're going to need, uh, especially as we begin next year, as the teachers and others are putting in and have put in these requests. And these requests, uh, ran us over by that amount. So, um, and they can cover things like educational software and workbooks and supports and subscriptions. So, um, this has to do with some of the detailed ones that we got for that, but I'm going to have to go get more of that information for, uh, for next time.
Was that six hundred or seven thirty?
That one, I think what I'm trying to hit on that one is the e- equipment, seven thirty.
Okay.
Okay.
The set six hundred, looks like it could be a timing thing as well, because we're not actually under budget yet.
Yeah, and it, and it does relate to, it's just all this stuff comes in at the end and in a massive, you know, load of, of, uh, stuff in our system. And so I know that it went, but I haven't had a chance to look at everything in as much detail as some of these other items.
Okay, no, I understand.
So in it, really, all, a lot of it has to do with just making adjustments with what we know is going to happen for next year. And, um, you know, uh, there are areas that are underspent that allow us to do that. So we're, we're making the adjustments that you'd want us to and bringing in the programs that you want us to. So that more or less answers those, but I'll keep working on that for next time and this will continue to evolve. And so, you know, as we get into the monthly report for June, you'll see that there's more of those kinds of things. And I'll be able to put in more details on them as well.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Mark, anything to add?
No, you, you, you hit everything.
Any other questions?
Okay, so. Superintendents evaluation. Uh, just wanted to pass this out to you. I handed it this out last time, uh, last year. This is the timeline for the superintendent's evaluation. Um, shared it with the board chair and co-chair or vice chair. It's just basically outlines, uh, I had to know as part of the, uh, contract and, and the board procedure. I let you know in April that the evaluation is coming up. And this timeline articulates for you the steps in the evaluation. Of course, you can make any modifications you want, shared with the, uh, leadership of the board. And it mirrors the process for last year. There is a Google form that you would fill out anonymously. But after that form is, we created it, but then it transferred ownership over to the board chair and vice chair. And then I, I don't see it anymore. So once I transfer ownership over, they take me off and you'll see your own information, but I won't see it. So that form can be used, um, this process then we would follow. And you can see that between now and the next board meeting in the comfort of your homes, um, actually, between now and the next board meeting, I prepare a document for you to review in the board meeting of May twenty second. And that document just covers the things that I worked on this year. You percolate on that in between May twenty second and, uh, or May twenty third and May thirty first, in the comfort of your home homes. You review it, um, you look, use the form that is provided to then put in what you feel are, uh, ratings and information. And then when we get to the first meeting in June, uh, we sit down together and those are shared with me and the board chair and co-chair or vice chair, develop a, a, a rating. Um, I answer any questions that you want. And between then and the June twelfth meeting, and we'll be talking about the June twelfth meeting, whether we have to smooth that a little bit. But at the June twelfth meeting, that's finalized. I provide any final Q and A. And, and you have your chair and vice chair start talking about what you want to do for the contract. So that's a basic overview of that. And then at June twenty sixth meeting, we discuss, you know, where you've gone with that. So this tries to outline the process for you. And that's very exciting. Lisa's excited, but you can tell. Sam's excited. It's a good thing to carry. So as exciting as this is, this lays it all out for you.
You know it by heart. Well, he knew it by respect. We've done it now, right?
Is there a way of making it easier on Dr. Willett? I think we talked about that last time.
And we're just focusing on those main areas that we always focus on, but. It's hard to be concise considering the importance. I think you keep track as the year goes along too, where it's not like, so nice you're.
Well, I keep track, but it is kind of like a maggot, you know, a little bit of that, but that's. So we'll have to, you know, the document I create that has the links and has all the I F D. But what I'll, you know, then I give that to you to chew on and decide how you feel about it. And that's after you process that, that's when you go ahead and use the Google.
Any other questions?
Questions?
I, I think it's pretty straightforward and if, um, if I can get assistance with Google. It's, it's a thing I do a lot of, so.
Yeah.
However.
Unfortunately for you, it's probably the easiest piece, you know, like that part is just.
It's already, it's already, it's already set up.
It's a thing we have to.
But the rest is.
I know, but just, yeah.
Can we jump to you, Jeff?
Let me in.
So moving on, um, end of year reconciliation. So between now and the next meeting and then the meeting following that, as we get closer and we get the excess cost payment in, you know, we'll be looking at, um, things that obviously there's the highs and lows, the overspends, the underspends. They'll, uh, be things that we need to acquire as we come into the end of the school year. So there's a series of things that, you know, we're taking a look at. And I will articulate them in writing in future meetings. But, um, you know, various things at this time of year come up for consideration that have been on the radar for some time, but we haven't, you know, have not been able to do. So there's various engineering things, there's blast repairs, there's, um, people that, you know, we would need to access as consultants for certain kind of, uh, behavior work for the district that would be very helpful. You know, there's, um, all kinds of, uh, additional work that could be done from the standpoint of, um, you know, uh, curriculum work. And these are things that we have been engaging in because we need to update curriculum, but there's more opportunities to do that at the end of the year. Traditionally, the board has done it at the end of the year.
And over the summer too.
And, or, yeah, well, and we have to watch out for the over the summer piece because we have to wrap it up by June thirtieth. We can't make an expenditure this year for next, so. Just see between now and then, there's various curriculum projects that we often wait to see if we have enough funds for. And once we do, we throw those rather forward to try to get some of that curriculum done. And there's a lot of curricula work that needs to be done in this district. We've talked about it. There was like eighty seven areas that needed to get handled. This is one of the ways that we're able to do that is when we are able to recover funds in some places, we can start to handle some of those eighty seven curricula. And as an aside, you wouldn't want that as a separate line item in a budget because eighty seven curricula times thirty hours to do every single one of those times five people would be a cost that would be too much in one span of time. So you take it in chunks. But that kind of work would be considered part of it. Um, and we have various things that I asked the administrators to, to throw out there that, um, you know, that will help us. And al- algebra train the trainer. We're trying to align our algebra curri- algebra curriculum. We could bring in people that could help, um, do that and train, uh, people within the district that could then train the rest of the teachers. Um, you know, there's various things that, um, that, um, that we want to do as a district from the standpoint of, of, um, additional curriculum in science and additional understanding by design. It's a kind of philosophy that many school districts use. It's called U V D. It's working backwards from assessments and it's training teachers how to, uh, do excellent assessing. Many of them aren't doing a great job, but this gets us consistent in our assessment and dealt sales with mastery of learning. So for instance, an area that many of the admin felt like we really needed is bringing in and having, uh, some work on understanding by design. So if we have end of year funds making an investment in un- understanding by design, materials and things like that for the teachers would be one of the other areas that would be important. Additional resources for literacy how program, which we have made an investment in, and you also saw that here. But there's another, uh, set of things we could get for literacy how. We've, you know, had adjustments to make from the standpoint of, uh, supporting the high school in various ways that they needed at the end of the year. And so there are some resources we want to spend then there. Our special education program needs updating, and so we would be putting some money into curriculum writing for special education. Um, it's desperately needed. So these are things that we can't typically cover or were unable to cover, you know, in one huge chunk because it can be too much. But if there are resources at the end of the year that we could put into it, and I don't know that there will be, because we don't know what the excess cost payment will actually be. We have a general idea of what it could be, but that could always change. So, you know, if that does come and, uh, the way we expect it to, and there are areas that, uh, that we've understood, and this can cover some of the other things that are needed in the district, it's vitally important that we do them. And so that kind of thing is something that can't happen at the end of the year because we reconciled it. Um, and the math and focus program, you have heard me mention how flash was going out. We need to do the software to be able to cover the stuff that this, that the math focus program uses. The math and focus program is also changing. So they have what's called math and focus twenty twenty. And we probably won't get a chance to invest in this program next year because of the reduction. So, you know, there are programmatic elements that teachers can use right now, that we could invest in right now. It would be part of this year's budget. And, um, that kind of, that would help us because the reduction next year would pretty much make it impossible for us to do math and focus twenty twenty. So the math and focus is our, is our entire district's math program. And in order to, uh, prevent us from being stuck with the resources that were part of the prior version of it, which if we have to do, we have to do, but if we wanted to be part of the twenty twenty version of it, we've got to make an investment in that, and that would be something we could do too. The S C E R T S training, it's another area that we would want to try to do if we possibly could. And you'll notice most of this circles around curriculum or training, and this is stuff that we need desperately. And the S C E R T S training is training that, uh, will help students in a number of, or help the teachers, help students in a number of different ways, um, from students on the spectrum to other areas of focus that, uh, will help students on special education and students that, uh, we can help remediate so that they didn't end up being in special education. So it's important that we train in these models and, um, you know, we're not always able to do that or do we have the resources to do it. So when opportunity arises, do that. We, we want to grab that opportunity. All of these things are designed around students, curriculum, training, teachers for students, materials and resources that keep us up to date. All of them are things that, um, you know, we're not always able to get. And if the opportunity arises to get them, we try to jump on it. And if the opportunity arises at the end of the year that we can, these are things that will only continue to improve or sustain quality of your education system. Um, and another one would be, exactly, we keep going on and on, but, you know, uh, the math learning center programs, it's called Bridges. You know, we need to update the Bridges program in math. That would be another thing that we can do. That we would not be able to do next year because of some of the reductions. And you'll know that we made, as Mr. Anderson said, you know, we were all happy to pass, but the reduction was significant from what we needed to what we were able to get. So if we're not able to do these things, it just sets us back. And if we have some resources available, that's what we'd be investing those resources to do. Without them, um, you know, we will be at a disadvantage again. You know, the math and the Borgus will be old and these other search trainings won't happen, staff won't be as prepared, things like that. Understanding by design is crucial to assessment, getting everybody consistent. And then we just wouldn't be able to do that. And you have to keep in mind as well, or I would ask you to, that there is no curriculum director, there is no one. So it's not like I could ask, hey, curriculum director, why don't you handle understanding by design training and go ahead and do it? There's no one to do that. So my only chance of getting the B D training here is to add, bring in, you know, get the materials and have us do a train the trainer model, that kind of thing.
And train the trainer models are, can be good, but it also waters down the message and it waters down the effectiveness, so.
So I have no working.
No, right, no, I know.
So this is how we get it done here, you know? And so I can't get it done without. Similarly, you know, I, I don't have people to manage that on my own. So these are ways of achieving certs and other trainings. I can't ask that or, or give that to someone on staff. I can only achieve it through this kind of thing. So.
I think what's also important is that things like literacy how, anything mentioned before is, you know, we fall, if we don't keep up with it, we fall behind in our dyslexia services and, and there are some of those kids, which is.
Well, it's one of our backbone programs, right? So, you know, if, uh, we aren't able to, to keep that going because of taking knocks, you know, it's, it's going to affect our ability to be responsive to certain populations, which will then put you back in the groundhog basin area of having higher special replacement, higher outplacement, all of that. You know, it's not solved by one action. It's solved by a multitude of actions, all happening in concert. So end of year reconciliation will have some of those elements in it. And as we get closer to the end, I'll know more about where we actually are for a final balance. I'll be able to talk to more of those things. But at this point, you know, what we're doing is we're, we're trying very hard to make sure we're covering all the needs that we know we're going to have and that we have, um, and that, you know, we know will be holes in the future.
Excess cost comes in towards the end of May?
Surely it comes in May thirty first.
Yeah.
So it's, it's really tough. And we're hoping we'll have a better idea though, but again, it's, that's why it's very difficult to say to you exactly what, what would, we would get precisely until we're into June.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but I can give you an idea. And so that's kind of what I'm doing now, is giving an idea of what was spent on, what was expended for, and what we would like to do as we're moving forward. Um, and, and if there is something that we. Um and and if there is something that we can use, you know, we'd be using it for those kinds of things.
Should we have a financing facilities meeting to discuss these things, either right before or right after the D C S payment comes in?
It would make sense to have one in June, yeah, so I'll have to put that together, and traditionally, we did do like a P O Y kind of thing. So I have it on my ticker to kind of mention that at this time, but you jumped right to it, Jeff, so I appreciate that. That's true, thank you. Um so that's that's it long and short, or like long, I'm sorry. That gives you an an idea of what um what we're thinking at the moment. So if there are enough questions, then we're moving to the added item G five to discuss the June twelfth board event meeting, which is thank you for that. There's too many balls in the air, you're absolutely right, so the June thirteenth date got set recently, and that's the graduation date. Traditionally, the T M S promotion is then the night before, so that would be in the twelfth, which happens to follow the same thing in the board bed meeting on that evening and.
Three of us will not be here.
Right, right, so um so I guess at this point, you're deciding whether you wanna shift it.
Well, yes, yes, we only like have eight graders, so truly eleven here.
Yeah.
At least Michelle.
So.
So can we reschedule it?
So we can, I guess what we wanna.
Maybe, because.
Figure out is in what direction.
Especially since we have um superintendent evaluation things going on, that we really should be meeting about. Yeah, can we do the week before?
We can, um we're just you kind of uh, let me look at the calendar for the district while we're talking about it, see what we got from that. Top part about the end of the year is um.
Activities.
Activities. So if we were to go, and I don't have the town calendar in front of me, so this might this might not have every town. June calendar. Let's remember to load it, and there it is. So we would normally be meeting on the second Tuesday in June. If you shifted it the week before, June sixth.
Yep, right.
There's fabulous folk tales, P G P, YMCA, something going on, there's.
June sixth or June fifth?
Fifth.
June fifth.
That's having a spot.
Fifth, thank you. Fabulous folk tales, let's see, Cubs got meeting, oh, T M S award ceremony. You can do it, you're just gonna there'll be parents. But again, you can, I mean, that's not necessarily gonna be anybody here.
What time is that?
At six thirty to eight thirty on Wednesday, June fifth.
June nineteenth too late.
Yeah, someone just had one next week.
Yeah.
Well, you just have one right after the other.
Right.
Uh I don't mind, obviously, I'll do whatever the board wants, but when they have.
You mean just do a different night than the fifth? Like the fourth? Made out of one of the one of the awards matrix.
There's a building committee meeting on the fourth, that'll meet with Michelle, so. The fifth seems very clear with the exception of that T M S award. The eleventh, uh you know, you're just gonna be on top of that special town meeting.
Well, that's also the council meeting that night.
Negotiations.
Council meeting is the eleventh.
Yeah, you'd have to go right from, if you're gonna do the negotiations meeting to a council. That would be the sixth third.
Oh, great. Six thirty.
So you could have that at seven thirty, but I as long as it just doesn't run over. So I think one of your options um is to go to the nineteenth. Another option is to go even after the special town council meeting, the eleventh, and third option is to go to the fifth.
Won't they have their regular town council meeting on the eleventh? So it'd be a half, half council meeting.
Yeah, so I don't think we'd be able to take this.
You'd have to go down to the library. I would have to find it, I would have to find an alternate location.
Can you try the library?
If it wasn't a library that'd be our, you know, we'd do the town library room.
Have we ever had our meetings at the same time?
Okay, no, not often, but okay, maybe that.
Another option is Thursdays. The Thursday, the sixth to thirteenth.
Can't do the thirteenth.
Sorry, sorry, this does the sixth or the twentieth.
We couldn't have it after the team of promotion, could we?
That goes to me, there would be like, we have, but we have like family, like we usually like go up to.
Could it?
Sorry, yeah.
Well, when do the letters go up, so they do awards.
Yes. Yes.
You know, they should do a letter if your child's getting a letter.
They do, I don't know.
Because that's how I know if someone I gotta remember, so we don't. One of us will probably come here.
And if you wanna avoid the awards night, again, you're looking at.
Does somebody have preference?
Do not Wednesday works.
So that would be June nineteenth.
Or the fifth, either one of us.
On the fifth, but the fifth again is the T M S, so.
Oh, awards, right.
Nineteenth, I want some question.
Isn't that, no, but then we're we're having meetings twice.
Back to back.
Back to back.
Yeah, the goods, on the good side of that, the nineteenth is far enough into the month that I'll have the most updated data that I could possibly have about where we go. Yeah, F F C meeting will have plenty of times of that.
But then do we really need the twenty sixth, we need both those meetings.
Right.
You might, you might either.
I'm just wondering what we need, I'm just wondering what we need for the evaluation.
We need, we need a fiscal year.
What will get crunched is my eval and then this is the conference.
Yeah, it's we usually use that for.
Because you also vote on, each year you decide to extend or not. And you have to make all those choices before June thirtieth, or generally you do. So that would just change that timeline that I gave you, um.
Were there conflicts on the fourth or sixth, the Tuesday or Thursday?
I think the fourth was the um.
Fourth is the town high school awards.
Oh, the fourth, so it was the conflict on the sixth. Well, the fifth was the awards, fourth was the school building.
Fourth is the middle school awards.
The fourth was the um town, yeah, P G P committee, so Michelle, you know, they would.
So what about the sixth?
Michelle.
And the sixth had the um. I'm at a dinner till six thirty with them.
T H S music concert.
Yeah.
So it looks like we're stuck with the nineteenth.
It's too close.
And we we shouldn't cancel the twenty sixth, that's the last meeting of the fiscal year, so.
And you'll probably need it for executive session on May.
And nineteenth today's?
I don't like that, too, it's the superintendent evaluation, that is pushing it together.
Basically, on the chart that I guess just gave you, the June twelve thing would turn into June nineteenth, you know.
Yep, that doesn't give us a lot of time.
And you'd be from June.
Give you a lot of time to do the review and stuff.
Target and review and.
And June twenty to June. Yeah, essentially, June twenty to June twenty five, the rest.
What about Mondays? I'm not gonna say the other day on the week we could do this.
I do have a Friday night.
I think I'm not gonna make a Friday meeting.
Probably just have.
So one alternative is Monday, the tenth.
You already have a Birch Grove.
I have a Birch Grove Foundation meeting at six, but I I would shoot over here, and I know it's unusual for me to be running in at the last minute, but you might see that.
Monday the tenth, very soon.
So yeah, that would be an example of one of the reasons why, but yeah, so I would be at that Birch Grove Foundation meeting, that's from six to roughly a little bit after seven, or I could come right here. And you could have your board, we could have the board meeting on the tenth.
I like that.
So I'm with me. I'll be late, doesn't that be here?
I hope, how many can make it on June?
Uh, I think we're.
I can make it, but I'll be late.
Can I get, can I get um C M T L, Michelle? You have to give us your feedback.
So that would be, you again, the superintendent's evaluation, you would be going into executive session to basically do my evaluation on the tenth. And between the third and the eighth, the chairs are discussing feedback. So if you're missing that, you're just not gonna get it.
Missing that, what?
You won't. You'll have to carry that feedback, then we'll discuss it.
Yeah, whoever's here would just, I guess, give feedback.
Right, so you're gonna be doing an executive session that night for my eval, that's when you give me your my final rating, the tenth. Anybody who couldn't be here would be part of it, and all your data would be in there, all the stuff would be recorded. It's just that that executive session is the is the last one with me when you give me my final rating.
But then we still have the.
But you know, all be recorded, you already have weighed in, is the point, but if you don't, you will miss that face to face.
Well, we could still end up on the eleventh.
Yeah, we could do a turn for one.
Because we we may not have a quorum on the tenth, we're right at five, was someone late?
So eleven goes back into the special town council negotiations meeting, we just have to put the.
We just have to go to another place.
Yeah, we could, you have to go to some members, we go to that first, and then we pop over to wherever I could find a location, or as we know, Jen, thank you, we'd be finding a location.
How many can go to June the?
No, it's still five.
Another another option is.
And and Jen, and Jen's gonna go.
We can, but it's tough if we do that right now, because we're gonna be in the same situation.
I mean, it's not the best.
What about um, what if we went earlier on uh, what if you went earlier on?
Before six o'clock?
Like what if the communications meeting got canceled and we did the sixth?
Does that mean the promotion's at?
Promotion's at six.
I mean, I'm sorry, do it at uh something earlier.
I wouldn't be able to, because it could be either early and, you know, colleague too.
Or later, like someone suggested, but after like nightly, okay, so. So you're pretty much looking at um tenth through the eleventh.
Why don't we do the seventeenth instead of the nineteenth, does that give us two more days?
Yeah, it modifies it up a little.
A little bit, helps it a little, you mean Monday the seventeenth?
I could do that.
I could do that.
Kate?
Yeah, I can do that, yep, I was just kinda looking at this.
Yeah, let me just look at the district calendar, I think we have it.
Yeah, yep.
Think I will have my children.
Can I just check the district calendar?
Jeff cannot not do it.
School's out, so.
Monday the seventeenth.
Does it have a song?
There's no school.
Make a motion to change the.
Oh, seven.
Or meetings scheduled on the twelfth to the seventeenth sometime.
I mean, worst case for town, if they're already using council chambers, we just have to find another location.
Okay, so the seventeenth looks good?
Yep.
Uh, second.
Still at seven thirty?
Yep.
So the calendar.
So June seventeenth, I think though, don't you need to make a motion?
Yeah, to move it to action.
Move to action, right.
Do we even have to go around?
I don't know.
I think we do.
You're changing it, yeah.
We're changing the dates.
So you had to make a motion. Make a motion to move item G five, board bed meeting versus middle school promotion to act, uh board action item J one.
By order, you have to modify your existing order, I think, for your existing motion.
We didn't have any existing.
Nobody seconded it, yeah.
I did.
I would.
So we seconded the to make the change, or we have to withdraw it and then.
He can he can withdraw. Withdraw, we withdraw your previous motion.
I withdraw our previous motion.
Alright, we're good now, now I'll second your new motion, move it to action.
Wait, so did you get all?
Can I get a second on?
I didn't second the suspicion.
They did it. They did, yeah.
They discussed, any more discussion?
No, who would take it?
Oh, favor say, I don't know, just any incentives, which carries.
That's the longest part of the meeting, don't.
I know.
I just cut Fisher's hat.
That's right.
I know.
I gotta go home and take some more allergy medicine, I can't breathe, I should probably have allergy.
Yeah.
Bye.
Alright, fair enough.
You're there.
Thank you.
Please, please get home, we can take them.
United.
Congratulations.
Thanks, Professor.
Yeah, congratulations.
Good work, congratulations and stuff.
Alrights.
Thank you.
Alright, so, okay, any of the zones?
What's that, what did we hear? I don't know. Did we go in?
No.
No, it went to action.
It goes to action.
Did we go in on it?
No.
We went up there, yeah.
Uh communications met tonight, um as we're doing, right, okay.
Yes, yeah. Yep, yeah, on that.
Communications met tonight, um we just talked about kind of honing in on some new district messaging through Dr. Willet and some advice we got from a um communications executive that lives in town, and that's it, we just talked about different ways to maybe start like a series of.
Music videos. I put everything to song.
We're gonna, videos would be great and and feel bad adding it to Dr. Willet's task list, but um hopefully we can do some new stuff to get information out there.
Where do you sing?
I'm gonna pull my hair out and do like a David Lee Roth thing about master learning.
Yeah.
Maybe ba- maybe some Baby Shark music, I don't know.
You know, you can sing one of our meetings.
It's gotta relate to kids.
That's right, you're very easy of the saying, not to be.
Um so we'll see, it's in the works, and um just a, you know, a new way to get facts out to the public. You know, mailings to the to town residents would be great, but um we'd cut all that from the budget, so those eventual things like that will come, so.
Goals.
We're kind of limited to what we can do.
Alright, and Michelle will not be coming, because she's like a two and a half hour physical game she's had, so just, I don't know if she has any things.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's basically about.
Yeah.
Um financing facilities has that met, we will have a meeting in June on end of year reconciliation.
And council meeting is, are you gonna be able to, Jeff, through schedule? Um there are two items on the council meeting that's me. Um.
You know, what percent fund and other things?
Percent fund and. Capital, I think, was it, capital seat, the capital?
Hmm, yeah, there's a capital request.
Yes, that's it. So Jeff's one.
So yeah, so if you can't go, Jeff will probably carry out, because we don't want somebody, the one in the.
Yeah.
I have only things with George. No, you're linked about the Birch Grove.
Yep, yes, yes.
Hmm.
Oh.
You're like, um, very, yeah, just really linked about it.
Well, a lot of work ahead.
Yep.
Yep.
A lot of work behind this, yes.
On this slate as well, I'm just put that up there. That'll take a lot of district time.
It's uh it's going to be a very busy two years. I will, I will say this, so that um, you know, I I'm very thankful to the Bellady, you know, Jim Packman, the board member, you know, on. I'm sure we've gained people, obviously, Peter Stavlo, I mean, everyone in the town and and work side of, um, are working very hard to, uh, to get us where we need to be with Birch Grove and, um and you know, uh, it's it's been something, it's been time intensive for everyone and it will continue to be, so, um, it's it's I'm very thankful to everybody involved for helping move it along and the, obviously, the vote was, uh, awesome. So, uh, you're gonna have a beautiful school and it's going to solve your problem and this community looks, you know, looking to to all of the people thinking about Talon now. It shows that the community hit this challenge head on in solving the problem and there's a beautiful new school, it's gonna be there for little kids. And as an aside, your enrollment is going up at Birch Grove. Um, for the eight year projection, you're heading upwards, so, uh, the high in eight years is, uh, from the fiscal year eighteen, um, evaluation or data evaluation, you were at about five twenty-two as an eight year high and exactly at eight years, you're in like five seventeen, but the point is, you're going up. So what I, what we had talked about before is, you know, while your enrollment at the high grades is, you know, is going down, you're gonna hit a threshold and then you're gonna start going back up again. So around that time, we'll be going back up again and you're gonna, that'll, that'll also propagate throughout the grades and about twenty twenty-eight, you're heading, you know, back up. In that zone of, uh, time, so, you know, you will hit a, you'll, you're never gonna be a small district, you're gonna restabilize and end up if I had to guess, you'd be somewhere in the twenty-five hundred zone in the eight to ten year, you know, as you go out from that point, when the enrollment is down, it'll start climbing again, starting twenty twenty-eight out, that'll start propagating and in another ten years, you're gonna be back up to twenty-five hundred or something like that, so you go down and then you climb back up. So that, you know, this conversation about enrollment going down, you're not going down forever, you do have a, like a bubble that did and that you're playing that out and it's
Can you see that now in the other rigs?
You can't, and that's the conversation we're gonna be having, we're talking more about Birch Grove is, while we are at four sixty-five, four seventy-seven now, you look at that eight year and that's what the state asks for, usually when making some of this evaluation stuff, you're at the five seventy, five twenty-two is based on it, and I'm re-upping those numbers for fiscal year nineteen, it's just we're not through fiscal year nineteen yet. So, um, so you're going up at the low grid.
And about the new school, I'm sure parents that want to come to a district that has a brand new school.
Yeah, you're gonna, you're gonna look, you are, you already look great, you're gonna look even better. People are gonna look at this district and say, we got a brand new school, they've got a lot of great things going on, I wanna live there, I wanna be there, I wanna work there, I wanna
Be part of that community.
So congratulations to all these hardworking people and to you, you you've made, you have set the future of of Talon in a very bright direction. Yeah.
They know a lot more.
The grassroots effort was great, uh, folks who guided
Mm-hmm.
made sure the message got out.
You did a good job.
Mm. And thanks to the friends of P G P and all the
Yeah.
We learned a lot.
And that was an amazing, uh, effort, thank you.
Alright, so, moving on, should, oh wait, four, actually we do
Yeah, we changed one.
J one.
So a motion to move the June twelve B O E meeting to June seventeenth, seven thirty P M.
Location to be determined.
Location to be determined.
Specter. Anything okay? Any discussion? All favors say aye.
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 Any opposed, any extensions, question carries.
Thanks.
So now we're up to public participation.
I'm gonna sit here, fifty-four Josiah Lambless-Caspar, um, sorry, because I think he's
Want to give you the mic?
No, I, I'm fine, at least they could hear me.
She's
Um, I just would recommend, uh, maybe some action from our Board of Ed, coupled with the Friends of Birch Grove, I know it can't be necessarily a partnership, and coupled with the students of Talon, um, like Talon Cares and Talon, students did a great job with Talon Cares this weekend, and I commend Talon Cares, but also the sports teams and everybody else that participated, to perhaps do the same thing for Birch Grove and all the teachers of Birch Grove to assist them in moving out of their classrooms. So, I mean, that could be initiated from the board, from the principals or what have you, but I'm I'm not completely sure when they're actually moving out of their classrooms, whether it's come this spring or come this fall, I'm not really completely clear on that, but it gives everybody an opportunity to earn some community service hours and really bring the community together.
And one, yeah.
Yes, yeah.
So, that's a, make it
And we do have high school kids coming down the hill that are doing their service hours.
Right, but
But can we help some?
The entire community could get together.
Yeah, no, we will, and we're gonna be a volunteer for it.
We have, yeah, we have talked, I know I have talked about it with with him just kind of on the side of
There's gonna be some high school kids.
Making sure there's, that we're volunteer effort is taking the, not taking away.
Think about those high school kids that have had, whoever, you name a teacher that is still there
Yeah.
that they would love to be able to go back to their classroom and say goodbye to their classroom before they tear it down, just think it's a, a opportunity for everybody to kind of get back, so, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, geez.
It's really
So we can get those lessons on.
Being with
I think that's a great idea, it's like, it's like bridging.
Yep.
Yep.
It's a community effort, um, I know organizations like the Moms Club recently donated some money to, um
Yep.
Teachers, yeah.
Tep To to all the teachers of the world, so
But like the physical, like let's do this, yeah, great, great.
Yes, yeah.
Big one.
Cool.
That's to be an orchestrated effort as well.
Alright.
Whatever they need, I'm sure we can get a lot of people to help.
Is there a date for that?
No, it's
Oh, no, no, we're going to do that.
It's not, yeah.
I mean, we do already have certain things that the high school kids are doing, but we do have community event or two. The problem is, we also have to have a place to go, like if you have five people in one box and they're just trying to figure out what they're doing with the, you know, that won't work. So it's gotta be one
It won't overwhelm them either.
It's gotta be the right timing, so when they have things in a box and we are ready, then, or they come, you know, and we can accomplish a lot of this volunteers, but we're still gonna need some people to move some of the bigger, you know, we'll probably have to do it in a, in a group or
When's that, I'm sorry, I'm not supposed to talk, but when does that happen?
So, I mean, we don't have a set date for
Approximately.
Approximately?
Is it fall, spring?
Mid-June.
Okay.
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah.
Tick tock.
Yeah. And, uh, you know, the the area will be, uh, I'll be talking more about it at the next Birch Grove meeting, but for now, obviously, things will move forward pretty quickly.
Can you maybe print and, uh, on agenda, an update for Birch Grove by now, since sounds like there's a bunch, something happening basically.
Yep.
By then, you probably, that's probably not once, maybe. Uh, yeah, the eleventh, I think, so. Alright, um That's it, right. Any, any motion?
What should we do, Jared?
Say.
Any discussion, all favors say aye.
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 Aye.